Yes.
You have the one.
It was just a pure rage message. You could tell they had come in and they had had it. They called here.
Oh, yeah.
I said, I can pass something in on a beat. I was really, my dad's a combatant. It was really hard for him.
Yeah, that was nice, though. Get that out of the way.
I'll be decided this weekend. In a short period. And we went out to the first house.
I'm 59.
We had four of the great. We had the timeline done, so we were really interested. We got life reserves on. We got.
Presented.
Yeah. We told the county, we got. He got wasted.
I'd like to call the July meeting of the Lafayette Common Council. Order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kirk, will the clerk call, have a roll call vote, please?
Clinker?
Here.
Snyder?
Present.
Reynolds?
Present.
Leece?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
Alersmeyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downey?
Nargie?
Here.
Warren, present.
Okay, first thing on the list is we need a public hearing for ordinance 2025-22. We have a motion to.
A motion, some motion.
Okay.
Second.
And second, okay. So do we?
I'll read it.
Okay.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation in the Parking Operations Fund, Fund Number 6200.
Okay, is there any public comment concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Clinker?
Move to reconvene. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You have the minutes from the June meeting. Are there any questions or concerns or corrections on those minutes?
Madam President, I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Okay. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Reports of the city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Fleet maintenance monthly may, renew department monthly may, water works department monthly may.
And these can be seen online, or you can go up to the clerk's office to see them there. Now, we're ordinances for second reading, ordinance 2025-22.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation in the Parking Operations Fund, Number 6200.
Okay.
Madam President, I move here to approve ordinance 2025-22.
Second. Okay, great. Mr. Deal?
Good evening, Jeremy Deal, City Controller. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, this additional appropriation request from the Parking Operations Fund is to facilitate the purchase of a replacement pickup truck. The department needs to replace a 2004 Chevy Colorado that was deemed to be unsafe at its most recent visit to the Fleet Maintenance Department. The Parking Operations Fund has adequate resources to enable this purchase, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance? Okay, will the clerk have a roll call vote of ordinance 2025-22?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, next, ordinances for first reading, ordinance 2025-25.
An ordinance for appropriation of local optioned highway user tax funds, County Wheel Tax Fund, Number 2490.
Mayor.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Madam President, I'm going to pass these out for you.
I move for consideration of ordinance 2025-25.
Second.
On first reading.
She was giving me the eye, and she's a teacher. I thought it was time. I thought it was time to go. Man.
It was just, we got it, we just.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, passing out a sheet around for you for the 2025 paving list. This will actually be the list for the next two ordinances that are before you for this appropriation of the Wheel Tax Fund, and then the next one from some additional appropriation for motor vehicle highway. So, as many of you remember, that's been on the council for some time. When the Wheel Tax was passed many, many years ago, we have made it a common practice here that we vote on that separately. We don't just throw it into the budget. We vote on it separately. We wait till we know, have a good idea of what roads we're going to be working on, bring the list to the council for approval and to appropriate those funds. So this is the list. It's moved back and forth throughout the year a little bit as we've looked at projects and needs and other projects that are going on and how they might tie into these roads, or better to wait to do a road to a little bit later in the next couple of years because we might be doing curbs and some things like that. So this list here is the list that we are going to be working from barring any unforeseen circumstances. On top of that, we're also going to be doing a significant amount of crack sealing, skip patching, deep patching, rejuvenator, and micro-surfacing. So these two ordinances that we'll discuss encompasses the funding to do all of those. Now, many of you may remember that typically we'll take some money out of edit to do some paving, too, and I'm not sure we're going to do that this year. We're probably not. We'll kind of wait and see. The controller and I spoke. We want to understand the effects of Senate Bill One and keep, you know, that edit kind of setting there as we kind of move through that process as it unveils. And so we'll just kind of play that briar, but we do have money available if we choose to, and we think it's the appropriate thing to do later on in the year. But for right now, this is what we're going to be asking you to vote on. So the first one is the ordinance for the County Option User Tax Fund, and we would appreciate the affirmative vote.
Thank you. Other questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance? Hearing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-25?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, we need to set a public hearing for this for August 4th at 6:01. Mr. Brown?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next one is 2025-26.
An ordinance for an additional appropriation in the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund, Number 2030.
This is.
I move for passage of ordinance 2025-26 on first reading.
Second.
Now you're up.
Thank you, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. As we talked about, this is an additional appropriation in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund out of the restricted account, and it can only be used on projects like this, on these types of road projects. And so we've watched that carefully. We've let that build up a little bit, and so we have ample funds in there to do this additional appropriation and then maybe not have to use the edit because this has to be used for those things, and edit dollars can be used for any legal city expense. So we, I guess it was a good thing we saved it up for a while. So this is a good time to use it, and we'd appreciate your support on this additional appropriation for the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Any questions from the public concerning this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-26?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
And we need to set a public hearing for this on August 4th at 6:02.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is ordinance 2025-27, and I believe this ordinance is going to be tabled. Okay. Do you have a motion?
I move, I move to ordinance 2025-27 be tabled.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? If you have public comments during, for this ordinance, you can do it during the public comment at the end of the meeting, okay? Since we're not going to actually talk about this ordinance tonight. Okay, so, now. Okay, ordinance 2025-28.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance in Tippecanoe County, Indiana.
Okay, where are we on the wheel? Okay, Mr. Brown?
Madam President, I move to overhear and approve ordinance 2025-28 on first reading.
Second. Okay, thank you.
All right, what we have in front of us today is what I kind of consider a technical amendment to our zoning code. It was discovered that the way that it is currently written with regard to boarding of animals actually prohibits outdoor runs and exercise areas, which APC staff, when they realized it said that, thought that probably wasn't going to work for boarding animals, and it doesn't. And we do have facilities, for example, showbiz dogs on Beck Lane, they have an outdoor run for those areas. So they do exist within the city of Lafayette. So what this ordinance does is just cleans that up to make it clear that you can have outdoor runs and exercise areas as part of a boarding facility.
Okay. Any questions from the council about this ordinance?
Does this mean I don't have to buy treadmills for my chickens?
I actually really want you to buy a treadmill, and I want to see a chicken on it, so.
Okay, questions or comments from the public on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2025-28?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Okay, next on the docket are resolutions. Resolutions 2025-09.
A resolution approving interlocal cooperation agreement concerning funding for the Hedgewood Neighborhood Park improvements.
I move for passage of resolution 2025-09.
Second.
Okay. Mayor.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, just want to talk about this project a little bit, and then Jackie will talk about the legal, technical pieces of it. Last couple of years, we've received some inquiries from folks in Hedgewood about wanting to do an upgrade of the park, and that park does get a lot of use, and it was time to do an upgrade. And so we worked with the neighborhood through the winter to get ideas of what they would like to see in that park, and we came up with some really good ideas and put together a significant plan to put in a wonderful park, I think, back in there that people will really, really enjoy, a lot of neat pieces with it. Those pieces have been ordered, they're starting to arrive this week, and so over the course of the summer, and I don't want to create any unrealistic expectations, as staffing allows, we will begin to put it together. The bid that came back to have the company assemble it came back very, very high, and so we're going to be doing that in-house as staff becomes available. But, you know, by the end of the summer there, we're going to have a really neat piece in the Hedgewood Park that I think the families and everybody can use with a lot of different options to it. This resolution itself is an agreement with Fairfield Township to give us $27,000 and some change towards that project. And on behalf of the city, we'd like to thank Fairfield Township for participating in this project with it. I think they're going to be very pleased when they see the end result. So just wanted to bring you up to date on that a little bit, and you should see some activity there in the coming months. So I will turn it over to Jackie to kind of go through the technical piece of it.
Okay, well, I'm not sure there's much left to go over from what the mayor presented, but as we said, this is a cooperative agreement with Fairfield Township. They are providing $27,000 of funding towards this project, so we are required to enter into an interlocal agreement with them, which is what you have in front of you today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk call a roll call vote on resolution 2025-09?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Okay, next is resolutions 2025-09. Oh, 10. Okay.
A resolution of Lafayette Common Council Annual Tax Abatement Compliance Round Two.
Madam President, I move that we hear resolution number 2025-10.
My second.
Okay, great. Dennis.
Good evening, Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director of the state. This is round two of tax abatement compliances. These are companies that filed extensions on their property taxes, therefore they had an extension on their compliance as well. So we vetted these thoroughly through staff and through a redevelopment commission, which recommended to find them all in compliance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the council on this resolution? Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns from the public on this resolution? Seeing none, will you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Clinker?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Leece?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Okay, under miscellaneous and new business, the council needs to appoint LPD Merit Board Member Dave Knott for another.
Four years.
Four years.
I move that we appoint Mr. Knott for a four-year term for Lafayette Police Department, Lafayette Police Department Merit Board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Okay. Now we need to set a public hearing for 6:00 PM on August 5th for the Wabash Township Public Safety LIT request.
Fifth?
Fourth.
August 4th. Should be the 4th.
Fourth, okay, August 4th, okay.
Will that have to be 6:03?
Yep.
The public hearing, though, yeah, it was advertised at 6:00.
Okay.
Okay, 6:03?
6:00.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, reports of standing committees? Reports of special committees? Reports by the mayor?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Reports of councilmen?
I just have a question. We got this certification, is that just informational? Okay.
And I have, I'd like to thank Cindy Murray and her crew that did the 4th of July, the Stars and Stripes concert and fireworks. It was another successful year. Thank you.
Thank you. Hard work. A lot of hours.
Thank you so much.
It's still ongoing at my house. Yeah. Just FYI, yeah.
Different funding.
Yeah.
Okay, now's the time for public comment. You'll come to the podium, give your name and address. You're limited to three minutes, and please be respectful and kind to all people here.
Pearl's Franklin, 923 South 22nd Street, Lafayette, Indiana. I'm here tonight to say I'm ashamed of the mayor and the city police department and the engineering department. They just put a $50 fine on a woman for parking in her muddy area, which is all provided by Charles Lou, and it's been that way since Jim Riley was mayor. Now, today only, today only, I started to kazoo. I found five or six ordinance violations. I went down to the first alley on 22nd and turned in, I found five or six ordinance, no tags, junk cars. A bronco sitting there with three-year-old tags. Now, she's got five kids to take care of, and she rented that place off of Charles Lou. And 22nd Street is nothing but a raceway because we can't have no policemen down there because they're afraid to come down there. So now, why is it easy for him to sit there and find some woman trying to raise five kids on her own and not have no safety? And the second thing I want to bring up, somebody, somebody in this room, I believe, God tells me, is drawing a little bit of benefits. When you go up Union Street to 11th, you'll find a Bonbo place working on cars on sidewalks, blocking sidewalks, been doing it for years. I talked to ours with Jason Burke and the engineering department, engineer. You know what's been done? Bonbo, zero. Now, what is wrong with Lafayette? You guys, do you know what discrimination is? The mayor and somebody, his face is he, please, needs to get on the ball, slow his feet down, and make that place more safer. I've got five cameras, four loaded guns. I'm safe, don't bother by me. I'll take care of myself.
Madam President, other members of the staff, thank you for having me. I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is James McKinney. I'm a lifelong resident of Lafayette, and I currently reside at 1116 South 20th Street in the Oakland School, South Oakland neighborhood. I'm an ophthalmic photographer, and I work for a busy eye surgeon here in greater Lafayette. Honestly, I thought I'd never be before, city council asking for your help, but here I am. I bring up a public safety issue in my neighborhood. On March 2nd of this year, I was attacked by a dog. Dog was again running loose, as it has several times before, I learned who it belonged to. I learned the dog belonged to the gentleman that resides directly across the street from me. Since I was attacked, I learned that it was not the first time this dog has hurt someone. The dog attacked his owner by his own admission, and the immediate neighbor, her dog was also attacked by the same animal. I reported the attack to Animal Control myself, and since then, the owner has been required to sign an agreement with the city saying he has a dangerous animal. And I believe you helped pass that ordinance in 2021, and thank you for that. That was a great help. Unfortunately, since that time, I have recorded the dog and turned that information over to the city twice since I was attacked, and he's just being fined $250 and refuses to give up the dog. It's clear the dog is with a irresponsible owner, and I've, like I said, seen it running free without a muzzle per the agreement that was supposed to follow. I've turned all the documentation over, but the owner refused the custody of the animal, and it's my understanding that a warrant is required to remove the animal from his custody. It keeps getting out. I don't see that that is going to happen, it's going to change. You know, the officer that I spoke with suggested I bring it up with you good folks to see if there's anything that you can do to help keep my neighborhood a little bit safer, keep my children safe, the other children running around, or the elderly folks that walk the neighborhood. You know, just the injuries to me were several thousand dollars in medical expenses, which he doesn't feel he has to pay. So after I take him to court for that, hopefully I can get that. But anyway, I just wanted to bring this to your attention and see if there's anything that you folks can do to help assist this public safety issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what was your address again? I'm sorry.
1116 South 20th Street, sir.
And the person in question with the dog, what's her?
1113.
1113. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, remember, there's a procedure for that, right? They go to the border works and then?
The appeals come to the border works.
It's in process.
It's in process, okay. Thank you. I know I've seen that.
Other public comment?
All right, well, so this is all kind of new to me. I'm Wesley Sossen, I live at 2417 Butler Street, and I came down today for the, on the docket, I just got a little confused for 2025-27. I believe that's my next door, across the street neighbor. They're trying to rezone it, put in a townhouse, and I just wanted to say a few things about it. I don't know if, I'm just nervous and just trying to make it through. So one thing is there's no sidewalks at all in this area. There's none in our area at all, and they're trying to squeeze three townhouses in this one and a half lot, and it's, they say it's going to fit, but there's going to be no yard, no place for the kids to play, so where are they going to play? Not on the sidewalks. They're definitely have to play in the street. You know, this is going to be, what, three-bedroom? You know, there's going to be a lot of people staying here, a lot of kids, a lot of, you know, there's going to be at least two cars, let's say, per house, and there's no parking. They're going to be able to, you know, park on the driveway, park in the garage, but any more than that, they're going to be on the street. There's no parking as it is, and they have maybe a little 50-foot section for, not even that, like a little tiny section for parking. Trash pickup is going to be absolutely a nightmare because it's going to be like, they have them twisted in all sorts of ways. If no one buys these townhouses, then how, what, because there's no yard, there's no sidewalk, then what are they going to do with them? Are they going to rent them? And then now we've got, you know, all sorts of whoever can get in there, get in there. It's just like, I don't want to say it's a cash grab, but it's like basically someone, instead of building one nice home and making, you know, a good profit, like the American way, they're trying to work around it so instead of selling them, they might end up renting them out and making more money in the long run. You know, my kids' safety is a big thing. There's a daycare down the road, we got schools around there, lot of kids walking the roads, trying to get home, dropping off from the buses. There's, it's already a crazy hectic kind of neighborhood, so I just worry for them. I'm always worried for their safety. I got two little daughters myself, growing up in the house for about five years now, so they really like it out there. We got a front yard, a backyard, a side yard. It's nice, it's beautiful, and we're all single-family homes, too. Every single place in this little area is single-family home, and they are usually, they're, I think, like 85, 90% owned, not rented. So I just think this is a bad idea. I don't know if we can do anything, if you guys can help me out, help my neighbors out. A lot of them couldn't be here. My father is a co-owner of the house, so I am also here for him today, saying on the same terms that we just, this is not a bad, this is a bad idea, we believe. And thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else for public hearing?
Good evening, Susan Schechter, 1001 Ferry Street. I was here last month describing the impacts of climate change. I was prompted by a vote by the county commissioners to adopt a moratorium on utility solar in Tippecanoe County. It was followed by a speedy second reading with approval of the one-year moratorium. The commissioners had passed a robust utility solar ordinance in 2021 that requires setbacks, native plantings, and a decommissioning bond, as well as other protections for neighboring property owners. The moratorium is a response to a proposal by Rainbow Trout Solar to develop a 1,700-acre utility solar farm. The property owners who have leased their land will earn five to 10 times as much by leasing their land than by farming it. The county will collect millions of dollars in taxes, but a well-organized opposition group spoke against the project. It raised a list of spurious concerns, that solar is noisy, news to me that it leaches chemicals and it destroys prime farmland. Forty percent of Indiana corn is used to convert to ethanol that's added to gasoline. Acre for acre, solar produces 100 times the energy of corn-based ethanol. Growing corn depletes farmland with erosion and compaction, it requires hundreds of pounds of chemicals to be applied per acre. So, in my 40 years in Tippecanoe County, much farmland has been lost to development, to housing, and to gas stations and industrial development. Do any of these uses require a decommissioning bond or defined plantings? I support the protections in the existing ordinance. I support utility level solar. I wonder if the commission's eagerness to quash renewable energy represents a double standard. When the Rainbow Trout Board of Zoning Appeals exemption is decided in August, I hope that Lafayette will support clean, affordable, renewable energy. Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Madam President, I just want to make sure that, gentlemen, you understand, sir, that that will be back on the docket next month?
Next month, can I get a date for that?
That would be August the 4th. I'm assuming it will be next month, is that correct? Yeah. I just, I just sensed you, you weren't real sure about that, so.
No, I was not, thank you, can you tell me the time? I'm sorry.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
This meeting, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comment?
Move for adjournment?